Good evening, everyone. Welcome to your city council meeting. Welcome to Laguna Niguel City Hall. Today is Tuesday, October the first, which raises the question, how in the world is it already October first? The time is 7:00 PM. Regular meetings are held on the first and third Tuesday of each month, right here in city council chambers. We're so glad that you're here and thank you so much for all your participation. At this time, if I could, have City Clerk Gomez, please call the roll.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Rains.
Present.
Councilmember Genaway.
Present.
Councilmember Minigar.
Present.
Mayor Protam Davies.
Here.
And Mayor Jennings.
Right here. Thank you so much. I presume we have a quorum. We are very fortunate tonight to have our 2014 Citizen of the Year and the current President of Laguna Niguel Lions Club, Paul Whitelock, to come lead us in our invocation. And after that, we have the pleasure of having Junior Girl Scout Troop 4497 coming forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We're doing fine. Paul, if you could raise that microphone back up and we'll get some technical assistance with the stand.
Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, please join me in prayer with a religious leader of your faith to support our city leaders and our city staff. Lord, please guide our city leaders and help them to continue to run the city meetings in the efficient and civil manner of the past thirty years. Help them see the way to fiscally positive and social justice for the operation of our city. Encourage our staff to continue the productive and loyal path with which they have always taken and protect our city sheriff's officers and our US military in their enforcement of their duties. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Paul.
Color guard present the colors. Would the honorable Mayor, city council members, and audience please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Audience may be seated.
Great. Thanks very much. Stay right there. We'll come down and say hi. That was a great job, girls. Now, how many have done this before? All of you? Even the flag holders? That's a good job. Thank you so much for coming. Do we have any scout leaders here? We do. Welcome. Thanks for coming back. We're so glad to have you. Didn't they do a great job? One of the best things we have is having you all come in and open our meetings in this way. It means so much to us as the future leaders of our city and our country to have you all here. So we want to let everyone say hello to you. So if you would, I'm going to pass the microphone down and you can say hi. You can give us your name, what grade you're in, and what school you're going to.
My name is Taylor Trupicio and I am going to George White and I'm in fourth grade.
Hi, my name is Ashley. I go to George White and I'm in fourth grade.
Hi, my name is Taylor. I go to George White and I'm in fourth grade.
Hi, my name is Maddie. I go to George White and I'm in fourth grade.
Hi, my name is Grace. I go to George White and I'm in fourth grade.
Hi, my name is Michelle Grisnowski and I'm the troop leader along with Kate Hughes. And thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you so much. I was disappointed you all didn't go to George White and in the fourth grade. So I just did a little bit outside. I wanted to say thank you. On behalf of the city, I want to give you one of our challenge coins for the thirtieth anniversary. Our pleasure. Thank you so much for all that you're doing for the girls and for scouting. Thank you so much. Yeah, I appreciate it. Do you mind if we get a picture with you? All right, great. Thank you. That's right. This all needs to be on social media before we get home, so it's important. Who's dismissing us tonight? Thank you so much. Good job, girl. We knew. Well, she said we're dismissed. We go home. Can I borrow your script real quick? Our first presentation this evening is a declaration, as we do each year, for October 5th through 12th, designated as Fire Prevention Week in Laguna Niguel. This time, I'd like to ask Chief Contreras, if you would, from Division Five, Chief of the Orange County Fire Authority, to come forward for this presentation. Chief, thank you so much for coming. Good to see you, by the way. Appreciate it. You get to stand in the middle. And we do this every year, but I wanted to just say thank you, first of all. We have, our US fire departments respond to, this is unbelievable numbers, an average of 3,555,400 home fires per year, resulting in an average of 2,560 civilian fire deaths. Newer homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster than older homes, with many of today's products infringing burning toxic gases and smoke when that happens. These conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape and to get out of their homes quickly. Our Orange County residents are responsive to public education and we can take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in these homes. The 2019 Fire Prevention Week theme is "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape: Plan and Practice Your Escape." Effectively serves to motivate the public to develop and practice a home fire escape plan in their households. And a home fire escape plan, if you don't have one, includes having a working smoke alarm on every level of the home and every bedroom, outside sleeping areas. It also includes having two ways out of your home with a clear path to outside. And so on behalf of a very, very grateful city council, we want to say thank you and hereby declare October 5th through 12th as Fire Prevention Week. So now the onus is on you all to go home and make sure that you've got a fire prevention plan in your own house. And Chief, I wanted to say thank you, but also wanted to give you a chance to say something, if you wanted to.
Mayor, thank you. I think you covered it. The number one thing I would ask any of the kids that are in the audience, we have found that the children are the number one reason why we do what we do. And when you go home, check your smoke alarm tonight. If there's one thing I can advise you, they make a huge difference and they will save lives because the best fire is the one that's prevented. So thank you.
Chief, thanks you very much, and we appreciate all that you do. Mind if we grab a picture with you right quick? Our next presentation this evening is Recognition of Our Emergency Services Volunteers. Very, very important group of people in our city. I'm pleased to ask our Chief of Police Services, Matt McDaniel, if you would, please to come forward and help me with the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. So many folks in our city that give their time for no other reason than they care. So we chose tonight to honor those people and thank them for their service. I'm going to bring up Phil Robinson. He's our emergency services coordinator. Kind of describe what these folks do for us, and they do it all free of charge for us. So Phil.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam, council. Thanks for the opportunity. I wanted to recognize our auxiliary communications service team, and they provide backup communications should other stuff go out, in case of a major earthquake, a major disaster. First, what I would like to do is bring up Ray Nidenberg. Ray has been, or was, the chief radio officer of the group, and that is an official title. It's traditionally filled by a member of the community. That's sort of throughout the county and throughout other cities. Ray was asked by my predecessor to take over the team when they had a bit of trouble. That was years and years ago. He tried to step down many times and I would just smile and nod my head and ignore him. He finally wised up and found his replacement, but he did an absolutely fabulous job and the great team that we have today and that we're going to recognize in a minute is mainly due to his work and his dedication and focus. So fantastic job over the years.
Great. Thank you very much.
Oh, that's nice.
It's yours.
When I first heard this was in the wind, my inclination was to decline, not because I don't like the recognition, but I think the recognition is going to the wrong person for the wrong reason. All I did was gather a bunch of people around me who were smarter than me and listen to what they told me to do. The folks in the back are the ones that should be getting the recognition. They have turned a radio group, a group of radio hams into, from radio hams, into an emergency preparedness group, from walkie-talkies that you could talk fifty feet to an organization with technology that if there was an emergency would be quite amazing to you. And I would appreciate the opportunity, for you to take the opportunity sometime, to find out what they're really about.
And we will. We have that planned for tonight. We're way ahead of you. So why don't we bring everybody down and we'll kind of go through. So why don't you guys come all, okay? We'll have you line up over here on the side and bring in order. So, and because we like to be organized and efficient, we're in alphabetical order. So Dave, Dave Black, why don't you come forward? Bob Evans, there you are. Net? Let's see. David, I saw you earlier. There you are. David Goran. Roger Hamilton. Kevin, I don't believe he's here tonight. Is he here? I don't see. Dante, I saw you earlier, please. Dale McNulty, and I would like to say a quick word. Dale is the current chief radio officer, and I couldn't do what I do and I don't think the group could do what they do without him. So a very important team member. And thank you. Ray, we've already hit, and Mark, Mark, I saw you. And Gary, please come on up. Gary Smerano. Yeah, why don't we get everybody in and... And that concludes our agenda items. We can go back up to the dais. I regret not asking them what grade they were in. This brings us to our public communications portion of the program. Just by way of note, I have a lot of requests to speak for them, most of which are on two separate agenda items. We'll talk about those in a second. So I really only have one so far on just of a general matter. But in that note, any person wishing to address the city council will need to complete and present one of the gold-colored requests to speak form, and you can give those to the city clerk to my right. These forms are available on the counter that's located near the door of the council chambers. Please be aware that the time to speak is limited to three minutes for each person. To allow equal time for speakers, minutes may not be given to another speaker, but you may have another person read a written statement, if you have one. City Clerk Gomez, are there any other requests to speak for them for the general item?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. Our first, and as it turns out, only speaker for the moment, is Stephanie Winston. Stephanie, welcome.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here on behalf of the Laguna Niguel Chamber of Commerce. I'm the chair of the Chamber of Commerce this year. It's my pleasure to represent the chamber in front of you this evening. I just wanted to let the city council know, the staff know, and the public be aware of some upcoming items that are just, the chamber is providing for the benefit of the city and the residents. Upcoming this Friday, the most recent one, is the Government and Community Relations. It's an event that's going to be at City Hall here at Friday, 7:30. The presenters will be CRNR. I know with the recent composting issue, that should be a pretty big, well-attended meeting. And then we have the multi-member ribbon cutting. So that's to honor all of the businesses who either have businesses that are outside the city of Laguna Niguel or are work-from-home, virtual types of businesses. And there's a ribbon cutting to help bring publicity and recognition to those types of businesses. That's on this Tuesday noon here in City Hall. And then last, we have the city manager welcome reception. So for Ms. Letourneau, thank you for representing the city and for being the new city manager. Look forward to a relationship with you, a long-term relationship. That is, and mark your calendars. I'm a planner, so I like to plan in advance. So this is November 7th. It's at 5:30 at Allen Automotive Group. So we all know that place very well. I want to, before I leave, I want to mention that all of these events are open to the public. We really encourage the public to attend and to expand their knowledge base by attending these, just things that the chamber is doing to help benefit the city and the residents. So thank you.
Stephanie, thank you very much, and thank you for all that the chamber does, and I couldn't agree more. Those are incredibly important events, so I highly encourage everyone to attend if they can. Since we have no other requests to speak on the general item, I see... Well, let me see if I can fish it out. What's your name? Well, then come on up. And I'll make sure and get you back on the other one again. Thanks.
There's two yellow pieces with my name on it somewhere.
Good, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and councilmembers. I appreciate the time to talk to you. Our schools have facilities that are greatly outdated. The average age of schools in Laguna Niguel is well over twenty-eight years old. Our middle school, Niguel Hills, and I'm a proud Niguel Hills parent right now, is forty-three this year, well in excess of the age of our city. George White, where we had the great junior girl scouts from, where my younger son attends right now, is twenty-eight. And if it's a rainy day and you're out front, you will notice all the holes in the rain gutters where it looks like we have the Dana Harbor waterfall coming off the front of our school. Our school board is looking at putting a facilities bond on the ballot in March of 2020. I really hope our city supports our youth and our children and supports these bond measures that are very localized. They are looking at a bond that would only cover Dana Point, Laguna Niguel, and Elisa Viejo, so the money raised locally stays locally. Our dollars would go to support our schools directly and our children directly. There's oversight written into all bond legislation and bonds that are passed within the state of California, so they are guaranteed to make sure the dollars are spent correctly. So I really hope our city takes the time to support our students and our youth because they are our future and we need to plan for it. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Appreciate it. Unless there's any other, I will now close public communications and we'll move on to our consent calendar. We have items one through seven for consideration. I'd like to note that we'll be voting on the current version of item number three and item number five is provided in the red folders in front of each of the city council members. I am pulling item number seven, and I want to check with my council colleagues and see if there are any other items that need to be pulled. None here?
Seven.
Seven, okay. Got that. Seven, five, two? Okay. And anymore?
I'll make a motion to move the remaining down.
Okay, it's moved by Mayor Protam. It's seconded by Councilwoman Genaway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items passed unanimously. We will now move on to those that have been pulled. The first one is Consent Calendar, item number five, which is the Award of a Contract to Interior Office Solutions, DBA People Space, for the purchase of interior and exterior furnishes for the brand-new Crown Valley Community Park Tier Three project. And this was pulled by Councilwoman Rains. Go ahead.
I wanted to pull this item tonight just for public record. This is the furniture for our Crown Valley Community Center that is going to be opening early next year. And one of the things that I noticed on here was some of the chairs that were being ordered were in excess of $700 each, and I just wanted to bring that point out publicly so people are aware of that because it seems like a large expense. So I had questioned it because I thought, wow, that's a lot for one dining chair. So thanks to our city manager, she was able to explain to me that it is an outdoor chair that will be in different weather elements and that because of it, it needs to have some other types of materials and be more resourced. And it does have a five-year warranty. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows when they look at something like that that we're not foolishly spending the money, but we're being cognizant of that. And I just wanted to bring that point out, and that's it. With that, I'll move the item.
Great. Thank you. My only comment on that is I wanted to say thank you to those current members of the ad hoc committee who went through the very laboring ordeal to pull all that together. I think it looks fantastic. I can't wait for you all to see this place. You might have seen what's coming. It's looking great, and these new fine finishes will make it a very, very special place for years to come. So I thank you to everyone who's done that. So I had a motion by Councilwoman Rains. Do I have a second? By, second by Mayor Protam. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, and thank you again. The next item is item number seven, which is a report on the thirtieth anniversary carnival. I have to say that I'm pulling this, one just to say a tremendous thank you to our Parks and Rec staff, our public work staff, our city staff, to our city manager's department, and all the admin, and including those that kept us inordinately safe in police services and fire protection. It was a very, very, very successful event. I told everybody that I met that weekend that I had no idea what it was costing at that time. I had some idea, really, but the truth was, is that I knew that whatever we were about to spend was invaluable, that we were spending something that a sense of community could not have been purchased at many, many times the cost. And then when I saw the number, I was inordinately pleased that it came in under the budget that we anticipated that it might have been, and that it's, it's, community volunteer numbers were literally off the charts. We estimate more than fifteen thousand people came through that event. We were anticipating two to three a night, and those numbers got blown away the first night, and they stayed blown away. I know that the Chamber of Commerce indicated that they sold out of the tickets and the beer and wine that they had the very first night, which should have lasted them for a weekend, but apparently everybody was in the mood to have a good time that weekend, and the sales just kept going. Our total costs are expensive. I don't make light of the number. We spent, I think the total was $116,000 roughly on the carnival. I broke that down. For the fifteen thousand people that were there, that's about seven bucks a person, and for the sixty-six thousand people in Laguna Niguel, it's about a dollar. So, you know, a little bit over a dollar. So it's, it comes at a cost, but I tell everyone that, you know, we're not the first bank of Laguna Niguel. Our job is to make sure that if we have funds on hand, that we're deploying them in a way that builds community spirit. And I will say that while things cost money, that was certainly one that was inordinately money well spent, and I wanted to say thank you for that. I know that some of my colleagues also pulled this item, so I will turn to my left to Councilwoman Genaway.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And the reason why I pulled it is because in this report, we're asked to give direction of staff on the carnival. And so I have some thoughts that I want to be sure when you bring this back to us are taken into consideration so you can provide answers, so I won't be sending you back out to get more information. But first of all, I like to start off, the carnival was fantastic. Great idea. Thank you, Mayor Jennings. Fantastic.
Every now and then.
We thoroughly enjoyed it, and I know, I think it was maybe the day after the carnival ended, I was in our city manager's office saying, okay, let's have a report and see if we can do this again. It was fantastic. But, you know, let's be mindful, I do have some questions about it because we are stewards of the taxpayer dollars. So a question, though, on the fifteen thousand people in attendance, are those unique visitors? Or if someone attended all three days, they were counted, could have been counted three times?
They could have been counted three times.
Okay, so it's not fifteen thousand unique. So when we look at, that's a lot of people to attend an event, but then we also consider we have sixty-six thousand residents, so that's a little over fifty thousand that didn't attend. So what I want us to take a look at is what if we were to be funding a carnival each year, what are we giving up? So let's take a look at the, what else could the funds have been used for? Because, you know, we have a much larger city than the people who attended, even though we all had a fantastic time. And then my, another question I have is what is the spend on staff? You know, in what I do as a financial advisor, when we're looking at senior care, we say we're spending the caretakers. We're wearing them down. So my concern is, I think so highly of our Parks and Recreation staff. What is the spend on them and how is that affecting them? Because they're coming, you're coming right off of the summer camps and going into the fall activities. And I know that we just added Parks and Recreation staff last budget cycle, and as a single council person, I say that's reached my tolerance for headcount. So I wouldn't want us to see that, okay, we're doing the carnival, now we have to add staff. So that's something I'd like information on. Also, how do we increase sponsorship dollars to lower the city's cost? I, you know, I saw plenty of opportunity there, and I think our city manager and city staff may have seen other opportunities too, so if you could bring that information back to us. And then also a further evaluation of the days and hours. I know there's some information here in the staff report, but, you know, doesn't need to start as early on each day. Again, I'm looking at the spend on staff, and then if we don't, if we decide maybe fewer days or fewer hours, what other vendors would be able to accommodate us? So those are the things that I, when the report comes back, I will be looking for because, again, I think it was a fantastic event. I'd love to see us do this each year, but I want to make sure it's not at the expense of other things for the, for our entire city. but I want to make sure it's not at the expense of other things for the, for our entire city.
If you'd like, I can respond to some of them right now if you want some information or I can bring it back.
Okay, I'll leave that to city manager Laterna if she wants responses now or if you want to bring that back.
I think we can wait and provide you with a comprehensive report.
Okay, thank you.
Council Rains?
So the first thing that I want to say is that our staff, our Parks and Rec staff is an incredible crew and I just want to really commend Ally for all the hard work that you do to make sure that they all do the work because that was a first-class carnival. One of the things that, the feedback that I heard was that other people had attended carnivals in other cities and that it was just amazing. So with that being said, I just want to once again reiterate how important it is to show our appreciation to you and to all your staff for all the hard work that was put into that. I kind of echo my colleague Jenaway's words on that was what is the spend on you? Like there was a lot of people there who are salaried, who, that's a lot of extra work on you working through a weekend away from your family. And I know we use some part-time employees, but we have some limits to what we can do with part-time employees also. So that would be something that would be really a big concern of mine, that we didn't overwork you or have other events that suffered as a result of having this carnival, although I think, I think most of us enjoyed the carnival. Couple other comments that I heard was, oh, we had a carnival in Laguna Niguel. So the communication of how it got out, one of the things that I thought about was we send a quarterly magazine out that shows all the events that are going on in the city and I think we missed an opportunity to have it in that magazine to let people know the carnival was coming. It wasn't printed in there and since we were sending it, maybe that could be something we could look into doing. And, and the other thing is the sponsorships for sure. Reducing the cost and partnering with some local businesses and other organizations that could really offset the cost with those things. I think that it could be something that I'm sure you could do again. But just keep being mindful of those items and having a budget upfront of what we were going to spend would be really good for us. And, you know, for a first time doing something blindly that we kind of did with our community input, I just want to commend you again for a wonderful job. So thank you so much. That's it. And this has, there's extra money left in our 30th year anniversary budget. And I would like to recommend that we consider holding on to some of that money and possibly giving it to the Historical Society, who is going to be doing an end-of-the-year event for our 30th anniversary of our city, which I think the date is December 1st, but their event's November 22nd. So I just want to put that out there as something that we could do with some of the money that's left over from the original allocated budget. So that's it. Thank you.
Too late. Again, Parks and Rec, what an incredible job. I mean, to take on something you haven't done before, not that you're not experiencing this, unbelievable. And our police services, I mean, everyone, our first responders, everyone came in to make this a safe and successful event. And just quickly kind of going on their sponsorship. And I know we talked about this, but I think getting sponsorship now will be much easier because we have stats. We can show them, you know, how many people we are coming, you know, they see that it was done well. So I think it'll be easier to do the sponsorships and I agree with the marketing. Perhaps we could have a photo of the fair on the cover. I guess it would be the summer one coming up, which would be great to remind everybody on that. But we did as much as we could. I mean, it was there. I think that, you know, now we can get earlier and words out there so we can even do more. So that was great. And that really was it. And again, I think the timing, it's something to look for. I think if anything, you know, staff, you know, you know, do we need to have it open at that time? You kind of know, you know, maybe we can push it a little bit later and maybe it doesn't have to be as late on a Sunday. So that'll help as well and condense it a little bit. But I can tell you, it was, it was really an incredible event and to see people that I've never seen before come out and with families. I mean, it was, it was really great and it was worth the time and the money. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Anything else? I wanted to note just a couple of things. Thank you for all those comments. I think I echo all those and I'm sure that we'll be implementing that. The only comment that I got, and I bet I got it more than a thousand times, was why can't we do this every year? And so that just meant to me that there was a grand desire for that, that people were enjoying the sense of community, that some of the vision that surrounds people in their daily lives melts away when you walk into an environment like that. So it really was nice. So I think that there is a large amount of sentiment to want to do and I share my council colleagues' comments on ways that we can do that. Just a note on the sponsorships. It was intentional this year that we kept the sponsorships to a bare minimum. It's, we intentionally, intentionally did not do that, primarily for the reason that it was our 30th anniversary. It was sort of the gift to the city, a gift to the residents, and we didn't want to be doing some big ask. In the middle of that, we were very fortunate to have Molten Guel Water District. We have Dwayne Cave, who's one of the directors here with us this evening. We were very pleased, inordinately pleased to have them there and I think that they had a tremendous turnout on their own and they were a very big part of our partnership that weekend. I want to say thank you to that, but there are many opportunities for sponsorships the next time. I'm told, and I need to check this out, but there are cities who do this and find a way to make it revenue neutral. And I'm very interested in exploring that. I think there's a strong desire to try to do that and still build an even more community fund while we do it. And some of the funds, there was a comment about the funds and some leftover funds. Just to note, one of the plans for those funds is that we are throwing a very large party in the spring of this year for the opening of Crown Valley Park. So rather than throwing another event in November this year to celebrate the 30th, we decided to push all of that effort into a later party and make it one even larger party. So there's something coming up as we open Crown Valley Park and there'll be some really unique opportunities there. So we can look at all of those funding sources as they come up. So with that, I would, oh yeah, I'm sorry, you had one more. Go ahead.
Hey, I apologize. As I was going down the list, there was one item I skipped. If we could have some information on, what was the impact on the surrounding businesses? And maybe we could get some information from the Chamber of Commerce? Because I hope that there was a ripple effect where the surrounding businesses benefited by the draw of people to the area. But I would just like to see how this was impacting our business community because they are very important community partners to us. But again, great carnival. Thank you, Parks and Rec staff and all the other staff, police services and everyone else who is associated with the carnival. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. And I'll, I don't think there's been a motion. I'll make a motion to move the item number seven.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Rains. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We're moving on to our, our next, which is the, we have two major items tonight. One is from community development. The other one is a city manager item. I've got a fair number, in fact, a substantial number, requests to speak for him on the second agenda item. So I think I'm going to do that first. If my council colleagues will indulge me, I'll make a motion to advance city manager item number one. Seconded by Mayor Protam. All opposed say, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nothing, so, okay.
Excuse me, Mayor. I also just need to make a record. I'm going to be recusing myself from the first item because I live 500 feet away from that, so.
Okay, so the, and the first item is now our second item, the community development one?
Yeah, right, thanks.
All right, well, let's turn in our books if we would. We'll go to city manager item number one, which is the adoption of resolution number 2019-1300 in support of an ordinance to ban the sale of all flavored electronic cigarette products in the great city of Laguna Niguel. I added the word great, but it's right there.
And beautiful.
And beautiful. Okay, remarkable, beautiful, and great. Anybody want to add? I took it from Fred, so. Before we start on this, and I want to, I want to read you a list and I wrote it down here. This is a list. Forgive me for a second. Papa Smurf, Fruit Loops, Skittles, Gummy Bears, Rocket Pops, Hawaiian Punch, Sweet Tarts, Kool-Aid, Cotton Candy and Banana Split. Anybody have any idea what I just read? That, that's a list of vape flavors and that's a very, very small, only partial list. This came to my attention. I was driving home and I heard the evening news and I heard that the city of, or the state of New York, or the city of New York had passed an ordinance doing this very thing. And I was inspired by that and I think that the time has come for Laguna Niguel to stand up and do something. This is wrong. It affects our children. I'm sorry that people have been getting sick. I'm sorry that they're dying. But I'm not going to be mayor and I'm not going to speak up when I see something like that. And I want this to change and I want the sale of flavored e-vaping products in the city of Laguna Niguel to be gone. And I was very pleased that when that came to my mind, I reached out to my colleague, Councilwoman Rains, and she was very happy to jump in on that. So I welcome you and thank you for your support of that. I also know that my council colleagues Davies, Mayor Protam Davies and Councilwoman Jenaway have a pro but coming up on this and I'm going to let them talk about that. But from a city standpoint, we are here. I hear you and, and this is where this came from. I'm going to open, if I could, public comments now. I've got a fair number of requests to speak forms and I'll just go through these.
Mayor, can I interrupt you for one second?
Please.
Can we have a staff report before we take the public comments?
Oh, please. Thank you. Are you doing that?
Actually, Russell Nahara, management analyst, is going to do a quick staff report for you.
Thank you very much, city manager. Mr. Nahara.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protam and members of Laguna Niguel City Council. The item in front of you tonight is a policy consideration to introduce an ordinance at the November 5th city council meeting that will ban the sale of all flavored electronic cigarette products in Laguna Niguel. Electronic cigarettes, also known as e-cigarettes or vapes, are sleekly designed devices which heated cartridge of liquid into inhalable vapor. In recent years, companies have started using aggressive marketing to entice young people by designing e-cigarettes to look like pens, USB drives or other everyday items and by adding flavoring like strawberry cheesecake, cherry misu or watermelon. Per the Food and Drug Administration, e-cigarette usage between 2017 to 2018 increased by 78% among high school students and 48% among middle school students. Per a survey conducted by the American Society of Clinical Oncology and the Harris Poll, one in five young people use e-cigarettes daily or recreationally, believe e-cigarettes are harmless and not addictive, and think flavored e-cigarettes are less damaging to a person's health than non-flavored ones. As of last Friday, September 27th, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention has stated there are 805 lung injury cases reported with 12 confirmed deaths. Where 62% of patients were between the ages of 18 to 34, 22% were between the ages of 18 to 21, and 16% were under the age of 18. While the specific chemical exposure causing the lung injuries remains unknown at this time, the CDC recommends refraining from using e-cigarettes. Currently, there is federal and state law restricting the sale of flavored e-cigarettes to minors. However, those bans have been ineffective or not enforced. It is up to local communities to further regulate the sale of flavored e-cigarettes. In consideration of the CDC's recommendation, Mayor Jennings and City Councilmember Rains asked staff to draft a resolution to ban the sale of flavored e-cigarettes to any person regardless of age in the city of Laguna Niguel and to bring back an ordinance to make this a violation of the city's municipal code. At this time, staff is recommending that the city council approve resolution number 2019-1300 in support of an ordinance to ban the sale of all flavored electronic cigarette products in Laguna Niguel and direct staff to return with a draft ordinance to be presented at the November 5th city council meeting. This concludes my report. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Great, Russell. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Russell on the staff report? We can come back to comments in a minute. Okay. Russell, thank you very much. Great report. I appreciate you working that out for us. Let me turn to public communications on this. I'll open public communication. Our first speaker is Rishi Paul Sharma. Rishi, welcome. If you would please state your name and address.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protam, council members. My name is Rishi Paul Sharma. I live at 25482 Route Ross in Laguna Niguel, California.
Welcome, sir.
I'm speaking in support this evening of the adoption of resolution 2019-1300, ordinance to ban the sale of all flavored electronic cigarette products in the city of Laguna Niguel. Over the last several years, increasingly, the common, national, statewide and local themes have embraced, amongst many topics, drug abuse, opioid addictions and homelessness. Countless millions have been spent addressing the manifestations of these challenges. It is not my intention to conflate all of these issues. However, as a father of four, I am truly aware of the temptations and the many dangers our children face every day in school and in the community. The best that I can do as a father is to be present, is to be present and diligently work to educate my children on the impacts of their decisions. While no substitute is available for active parenting, we can and should work together as a community to take small steps to mitigate the inception of and the proliferation of the addictions being facilitated by these gateway tools such as e-cigarettes. I am not so naive to believe that banning the sale of e-cigarettes will result in the complete eradication of vaping in our community, nor will it materially prevent addictions. And further, I do not believe that a ban is a substitute for personal responsibility. Rather, I view this proposed ban as symbolic of a commitment that we as a community are making not only to our children, but to their health and to their futures. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much and well said. All right, next speaker this evening is Michelle Plossel Campbell. Michelle, welcome back.
Thanks.
Long time.
Yeah, I know. Hi, I'm Michelle Plossel Campbell. I live at 24731 Cali Vieja in Laguna Niguel. I am a resident of Laguna Niguel since 1992, so a couple of years now. I am supportive of this ban, but I'm also here representing the CUC PTSA, the Niguel Hills PTSA and the George White PTA tonight. As a council of PTSAs for Capistrano Unified, we have taken a very strong anti-vaping e-cigarette education stance this year as part of our advocacy agenda. So I want you to know that we support you in this ban and across our state, what we are finding is that it's the cities and the counties that are taking the lead in the battle against vaping and e-cigarettes and promoting the health of our youth. And it's our cities that are needing to band together because we're not finding that change happening in Sacramento right now because of the lobbying power of the cigarette industry. And it's a multi-billion dollar industry. So I commend you for taking the stand and we strongly support you. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And we do, we do appreciate all that Capistrano Unified's doing. I do note that they are, they are facing an unbelievable statistic that 22% of 11th graders, so that's one in four roughly, 11th graders have used e-cigarettes in the last 30 days. One in four. Unbelievable. Our next speaker is Esther Wu Lee. Esther, welcome. If you would please state your name and address for us, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Esther Wu. I am the advocacy manager at American Lung Association of Orange County and the address is 513 East First Street, Tustin, California. I'm here to speak in favor of the ban on the sale of electronic cigarettes. As the city manager has already stated earlier, there has been about 32% increase in high school students vaping just last year on top of the 78% increase in the year before. So in the last two years, there has been an increase of 135% among high school students and this is a serious issue. And flavor is reported as one of the top reasons why youth begin trying out vaping. And there has been studies that show that vaping leads these, once hooked onto nicotine, they will transition into traditional cigarettes as well in the future. So I'm here to speak in support of this. And in addition, I would also like to address that secondhand smoking to traditional tobacco is still an issue that needs to be addressed as well. And American Lung Association has been working in the past four years trying to work on an outdoor smoke-free area. And this is not only to protect the customers' health, but the families who are there in the public spaces. So I would like to just add that in as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much for your comments, Tom. Our, our next speaker is Scott Alvey. Scott? I'd say welcome to City Hall, but you're here every day, so good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam and members of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam, and members of the council, uh, and staff, very, very important people. Uh, I'm speaking as an individual, as a, as a father and a grandfather. The son of someone who died of lung cancer, my mother. Uh, this, this, I was, I read the, the staff report. I did some of my own little looking on, I'm not a millennial, but I do know how to use the internet, and the, the proof, the, the facts are incontrovertible. There's, it's just, this, did I even say that word right? I think I did. Um, there is no question here, and it, I find it offensive that something exists that can hurt so many people. Um, inherently, I'm always going to be against anything that stops business, that stops commerce, that stops people's ability in a free enterprise system. In this particular case, there's no question personally in my mind that this is a good move and it's the right thing to do, and I applaud the city and the staff for, for bringing this forward. I talk to my children, both of them are educators. One of them, my son, is a, on staff at Arizona State University, and it's sad at how many students in colleges and at high schools are, are experiencing this horrible, horrible thing. And, uh, it's killing people. It's killing people that are students under my children. If anything, I would say not just to stop at this point, but I would add the word "ban use" as well. And that may be something you have to go forward with later on, and it's probably an enforcement issue. But I applaud, uh, this motion and, and this move, and I stand behind you, whatever you do. Thank you.
Great, Scott. Thank you very much. Our, uh, next speaker is Dr. Diane Lynn. She comes to us from Mission Hospital Family Resource Center. Welcome, Dr. Lynn.
Good evening. My name is Diana Lynn. I'm Manager of Community Behavioral Health at Mission Hospital. I work with the Family Resource Centers in Lake Forest and San Juan Capistrano, and with our Youth Substance Use Prevention Campaign. In the last forty years, smoking by high school students has decreased substantially. The public health community spent thousands of dollars for prevention, and it's been working. Today, less than nine percent of high school students smoke traditional cigarettes, and that evolves into fewer adult smokers. Subsequently, we have less cancer, less heart disease, and less respiratory illness in the community. However, the rise in popularity of electronic cigarettes is threatening to erase decades of progress. E-cigarettes are sleek, high-tech devices that are available in a myriad of flavors designed to appeal to young people. Studies show that a very high percentage of e-cigarette users go on to use traditional cigarettes. We know that most adult smokers started when they were teens, and the tobacco industry knows this as well. Flavors are a very effective way to entice teens into becoming customers for life. As you mentioned, communities such as ours are being particularly hard-hit with this epidemic. The most recent California Healthy Kids Survey shows that twenty-two percent of Laguna Niguel eleventh graders have used e-cigarettes in the past thirty days. This is higher than most other neighboring school districts, as Orange County's average is thirteen percent and the state average is ten percent. For these reasons, I am particularly grateful to Mayor Jennings for placing this item on the agenda, and I encourage your community to adopt an ordinance banning the sale of flavored nicotine products so that we can help stop this epidemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lynn. Our, uh, next speaker tonight is Deb Okura. Welcome to City Hall. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor.
If you would, please state your name and address.
Deb Okura, and I live at 27832 Rural Lane in the city of Laguna Niguel. And I'm actually here speaking tonight as a concerned parent who is extremely concerned with the escalating use of e-cigarettes and vaping by our local teens that I personally witnessed on campus at our local high school, Alisa Niguel. As the mother of two boys at the school, I do have the opportunity to be on campus quite frequently, and I have observed vaping escalating tremendously, especially within the last two years. Yet, I was still alarmed to learn, as you've mentioned, um, Mayor, that in the recent California Healthy Kids Survey, that it really uncovered that twenty-two percent, or about one in four of the eleventh graders in our Capistrano Unified School District have indicated they have used e-cigarettes in the last thirty days. That is a very concerning statistic, and I feel that more action is needed to be taken to protect our local teens right here in our community. I also feel that it is absolutely unreasonable that companies such as Juul continue to aggressively market their products to entice teens by flavoring them in the myriad of ways they do. In fact, I learned that there are over fifteen thousand different e-juice flavor options available. This is a strong enticement for the many teens who don't realize the danger of the poison that they are really putting into their bodies. In fact, at a recent parent education night at Alisa Niguel High School, I learned that just one Juul pod contains the equivalent nicotine of twenty cigarettes. I am honestly surprised, yet grateful, that we haven't had a local teen, to my knowledge, hospitalized with the severe lung illnesses related to vaping that we've seen on some of the national news recently. You have thirty seconds. While I understand that banning the sale of flavored nicotine in the city of Laguna Niguel won't fix all of the issues we're seeing with vaping, I do feel that this bold move at the local level can certainly help get the momentum needed to spur action at the county, state, and federal level. So I do urge you to protect our local teens by adopting a ban on the sale of flavored nicotine products in the city of Laguna Niguel. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. And our next speaker is Colin Okura. No relation, I assume. Colin, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have an idea what your address is. If you would just say your name for the record.
All right, uh, my name is Colin Okura, and I'm a senior at Alisa Niguel High School. And, uh, the CDC has stated that vaping created a public health crisis in Southern California and across the nation. I can't speak for the nation, but I'm here today to tell you about how bad the problem really is here at my school from a student's perspective. You can go to the bathroom during passing period, and I guarantee one person is vaping in there. What's even worse, some people vape during class. The problem at Alisa Niguel is so bad, there are jokes about renaming the boys' bathroom "The Vape Lounge." The issue becomes more serious when you realize that these people are killing themselves. I personally think the re, reason people vape is because they want the attention as well as the variety of flavors. To make matters worse, they try to rationalize their thinking by saying it's not addictive or it's harmless. I think the parents who have had their kids in the hospital because of vaping would disagree with those statements. I would like to leave with this message. Banning the sale of flavored nicotine alone will not end the problem, but is a step in the right direction. We must together as a community also provide better education on the harmful effects of vaping before we lose more teens to something that is easily preventable. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in. Uh, I'd like to hear next speaker, which is Zohal Norsay. Zohal, welcome.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, and community members. I live at 27671 Blossom Hill Road, Laguna Niguel. My name is Zohal Norsay, and I currently serve as ASP President at Alisa Niguel High School. I am a senior this year, and I've spent the last twelve years among some of the most incredible people I know. We have grown up together and become the young adults that we are today. I've witnessed people achieve greatness in their academics, sports teams, and extracurriculars. I've also watched people mess up their lives through substance abuse. The boy who was once the only kid in class allowed to read chapter books in the first grade is now struggling to overcome addictions. Vaping among high schoolers is spreading like wildfire throughout not only high schools, but middle schools as well. This is a serious matter, and if we don't stop it now, it will only get worse. I don't want to see my classmates mess up their lives anymore. These companies are attracting the young generation by offering a wide variety of flavors to make it appear as harmless. In reality, it is only going to lead them down the wrong path. I urge you to support the ban and help us limit this problem before it becomes any worse. If you are a parent, it is your responsibility to keep an eye on your kids, and if you do find out that they have been using e-cigarettes, instead of punishing them, help them to stop and show them through love and support that you care about them and you only want the best for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else currently happy about the future of our country with these two speakers? Really proud of you guys. Thank you for coming on. Our, uh, our next speaker is Tammy Amili. Tammy. Good to see you. Welcome to City Hall.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Tammy Amili. I'm at 27811 Manor Hill in Laguna Niguel. We all know that smoking was on a decline amongst teens until the vaping came into the market about eight years or so ago. I come from a family of a mother who was a smoker. I was raised around smoking. My dad smoked. Um, and so that was what I didn't want to do. So I'm raising my kids to not go in that direction, and we talk about it on a regular basis. Vaping has changed all of that. I have so many friends with teens that do vape, they do sports, and they're vaping. And it is becoming an issue, and they've resorted to drug testing their kids and getting them the help they need. They're vaping in their bedrooms. Uh, my daughter goes to Orange County School of the Arts, so she's not local. They recently cracked down on their vaping, smoking policy, and so they had to create a whole new line item and, um, a form for parents and teens to sign, which I applaud them for doing because, um, you know, it's, it's such an issue, and for the teens to now know that if they are caught even once vaping, it will go permanently on their college record. That's a step in the right direction that they, they may not take. I, I applaud you for bringing this issue. It is the flavors that are very attractive to them. You know, if you're smoking something that tastes like bubblegum and you're thinking of bubblegum, then why would you, why would you stop doing that? There is no harm involved for them. You know, schools didn't have these problems as much eight years ago that they do now, and we're seeing that the schools are now having to deal with more than, than they need to do. Um, so I just would urge everyone to vote against, you know, the, the vaping in this community and do what Laguna Beach has already done. I think if we follow suit with what other cities, and we're taking a lead in that, um, it could be, you know, a citywide ban, but it's gonna trickle down. Other cities are gonna start taking the lead as well. And so I appreciate you bringing this issue.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
That's certainly our hope, so. Thank you very much, Tammy. Our last speaker, at least the last card that I have on this one, is Stephanie Winston. Stephanie. Welcome back.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers and staff, uh, it's really difficult to follow and act like that. Uh, we've had some amazing speakers, um, with Michelle and Rishi and, um, Dr. Lee and, uh, Scott Alvey, as they very eloquently explained why they're in support of this ordinance. And I'm not going to reiterate that. I just wanted to say that I too am in support of adopting this ordinance for the reasons that they stated, and that, uh, this is just a step in the right direction. That I'm not going to believe that this is going to stop vaping, but the fact that it's marketed towards children, it's not regulated like traditional tobacco is by the FDA, and it's still available to the kids. Uh, they, children shouldn't be able to get it, but they do. And until legislature is able to address the fact that they can purchase it online. The City Council, you're doing what you can do, and you're taking a stand, and I applaud you for doing that. As a resident of Laguna Niguel and a mother of, uh, a young child here, uh, I, I want this to be a safe place for him to grow up. And we've already had that, my husband and I have already had that conversation with our six-year-old that just because it looks like candy, it smells like candy, it sounds like candy, it says cotton candy in the name doesn't mean that it's candy, and it's nicotine, and it's not good for you. So it's, I, we've had that conversation, but I'd really like to not have him exposed to it as he progresses through school. So thank you.
Great. Stephanie, thank you very much. This time, I'm gonna close, uh, Public Communications. I'll open it up to my council colleagues for comment. Uh, Mayor Protam Davies?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming and speak. Um, I'm typically pretty brief when I talk about issues, but uh, this is really important to me, so I asked that you bear with me, and I didn't want to miss anything. But, um, with e-cigarettes, when they first came out, the non-flavored ones, these were meant for those that were longtime smokers to be able to wean off smoking. This wasn't to get them. So that compared to what we're talking about are two different issues. Uh, when I was elected in 2012, one of my main goals was to be proactive and to be a partner with our police services and council when it came to drug awareness and educating our teens and parents. In 2014, I was attending a meeting at the National Council of Alcoholism and Drug Dependence, Orange County. I clearly remember the speaker introducing us to e-cigarettes along with a variety of flavors, including gummy bears, bubblegum, and cherry, all directed towards our teens. It was clear where the tobacco company was going. Since the nineteen nineties, the campaign to educate kids that smoking wasn't cool and that it would kill you was working. The number of teens and young adults that had started smoking had greatly dropped, and so didn't the tobacco company's revenue. It was clear that the e-cigarette was a new way to get their teens back. When the e-cigarette first came out there, there were no regulations or limits to how much nicotine could be in a cartridge. They were being produced in garages with no oversight and sold to our kids. Because this was a new way of smoking, there weren't any stats or research that could be used to show how dangerous this was to their health, even though it didn't take a rocket scientist to know that if you inhale through a pipe that had a liquid mixture of propylene, glycol, glycerin, nicotine, flavorings, additives, and differing amounts of contaminants, that this would ultimately cause the same ef, uh, effects, if not worse, than smoking did. And that brings me to today, 2019, when on a daily basis we are hearing that young adults and teens are dying or hooked up on lung respirators because of vaping. Your kids are being taught that vaping is cool, or as they say, "good vibes." There are vaping clotheslines where the pipe can be hidden in the pocket, and you can inhale through the drawstrings, which allows them to vape anywhere they want, including school. And because of this, the schools are looking to install vapor detectors. Doctors are finding more cases of schizophrenia, personality disorder in thirteen-to-sixteen-year-olds compared to the past when it would normally be diagnosed in their early twenties. Mental health issues are increasing due to the addiction of vaping, and let's not forget, they are now combining THC with nicotine. This agenda item couldn't have come at a better time. What the tobacco companies are doing to our teens is reprehensible, and it needs to stop. Not allowing Laguna Niguel to sell flavoring vaping cartridges is a good start, and I'm encouraging the rest of our fellow councilmembers to do the same in their cities. We are, well, working on a vaping, up here, we, you'll see over there, we have flyers here. This is something that Councilmember Jenaway and myself and the council have been doing workshops for the last many years. Uh, this is a vaping workshop that will be October 22nd at Niguel Middle School. We'll have a room for the kids separately taught and a room for the parents. I highly recommend you come to this. Um, it's gonna be showing you a lot of things that maybe you weren't aware of, but I thank you very much for coming here, and, um, I'm, I'm very upset about this, and I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Protam. Councilwoman Jenaway?
And thank you to everyone for coming tonight. This really is an important issue, and it's, it's an issue that affects, um, many members of our community and particularly our youth. In fact, when I was driving home from Rotary today, uh, the state of New Jersey announced their first vaping-related death, so the, the count keeps climbing. And, um, we've heard about so many of the cases of vaping-related illnesses and deaths in such a short period of time. And while e-cigarettes may have originally been conceived to help people stop smoking, the collateral damage has been significant for all age groups, including our children. And make no mistake about it, flavored e-cigs were manufactured to attract and addict children and to turn them into lifelong users of this product. The detrimental health effects related to vaping, the rapid rate at which usership is increasing, especially among children and teens, and the swiftness, swiftness with which these illnesses progress are all moving at a much faster rate than science can to determine the exact vaping-related reason. So much so that the United States Surgeon General and the Secretary of Health and Human Services call this an unprecedented challenge, and because of this, we need to take action as a city council. Our own Laguna Niguel students tell us that vaping is so prevalent that it is happening in the classrooms, at sports teams' practices, in the classrooms, at sports teams' practices, in restrooms, and many other places. In the name of public safety, which is a number-one priority in this city, we must ban the sale of flavored e-cigarettes. And since many of those who started on flavored e-cigs may now be addicted, it may not make a difference to them whether or not the flavor is candy or tobacco. So I think that once this is passed, we also need to continue monitoring the usage among youth. In addition to working with the California Department of Health and the CDC, I suggest the city also reach out to the White House Office on External Affairs to receive information and updates, and also work with our local health partners and the health advocacy organizations. And as Mayor Pro Tem Davies mentioned, that on October 22nd, we are having an educational workshop for vaping, and I want to let you know that this is something that I have discussed many times with our youth committee. Our youth committee are 15 high school students that are appointed by the city council to be advocates for the teens in our community, and asked them what would be most effective if we did something like this. And it's the teens that told us that they wanted to have a separate presentation than the parents. They didn't want to be sitting next to their parents when this was being discussed, but they also wanted a message that was targeted specifically to the teens. So the presentation may be a little bit different because of the groups that they're reaching. So the parents will be in one auditorium, the students will be in another, but just think of the conversation that you can have on the way home. But this is so important for all parents and all teenagers, and I say tweens too, because this includes middle school students, that they should all be attending this October 22nd workshop. You will be seeing that on our city website, you'll be seeing it on social media. Please let us know if you need hard copies of the flyer that Mayor Pro Tem Davies showed, because we will be happy to get hard copies to your organization if that's the best way for you to reach out. But it's imperative that our entire community stands shoulder to shoulder on this topic. It is our youth, it is our children, and it is their future health. So I greatly appreciate all of you coming here and your comments tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. Councilwoman Mediger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In our beautiful, great city, public safety and health is job number one for all of us. And based upon the reports from CDC and the sheer size of all the emails that we've been receiving, and talking to a lot of people from Capital Unified School District in reference to what's going on in our middle and high schools, sure to the point, wholeheartedly in support of the ordinance to ban the sale of all flavored electronic cigarette products in this city. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mediger. Councilwoman Reins. And thank you very much for your support on this.
You're welcome. I'm pleased that we're able to bring this forward today as a council and also to hear the comments from our community. When I first heard about this, my first instinct was, well, I truly believe that Laguna Niguel is a business-friendly community, and we shouldn't be banning, you know, somebody's opportunity to have a business. However, when you see the staggering statistics that are behind what flavored e-cigs are doing to our youth, there's no other option than to look at this and say, "This has to stop." With that being said, even though we're going to probably move forward, it sounds like we're all pretty much in agreement here with our audience, there's a few things that I think will still not stop the youth from using these. One of these things are, we are very fortunate that we live in a community where we are more affluent and we have a lot of discretionary income. So an actual vaping mechanism is $50 to $100 just to buy that unit, and then anywhere from $25 to $45 a week to continue to buy the juices. So I implore all of us as parents that we pay attention to what we're giving our kids on a daily, weekly basis when we're letting them walk out the door, and how much money they're walking out with, because we can be part of the solution. This ban will help, but they are able to go to local other cities, and we hope that our other council colleagues in our surrounding cities will join us by us taking the lead on this. When you hear bubblegum, creme brulee, mint, it's obvious that this is a huge market. Eighty percent of all e-cigs sold, eighty percent of the revenue of e-cigs is flavored, so we know that it's a big market. So we are making a stand, and I appreciate the fact that my colleagues all echo what we say, and I thank you all for being here today. So with that being said, I think it's important that we move forward in this resolution and this code. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilwoman Reins. I was speaking with the principal of Elisa Niguel High School this past week, and she commented that said that the average amount of nicotine intake for the high school students that are vaping is the equivalent of two packs of cigarettes a day. I mean, let that sink in. So the truth of that is, is that they're not only vaping at school, they're vaping on the way to school and the way home from school, and the entire time that they're at the house. They can't get away from it, and a two-pack of cigarettes a day habit. So this is a problem that is invasive into everything that our children are, everything that we are. And so I'm very pleased to hear the support of my council colleagues. I think this is a right move. One of the speakers said that we're not naive, and I'm not naive. I don't believe that we're going to move the needle near far enough, but we're going to move it tonight, it sounds like, in a way that at least starts us on a path towards doing something that we need to stand for this, and that's who we are as a community, and I'm very, very proud to have that. With that, I'm going to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2019-1300 in support of an ordinance to ban the sale of all flavored electronic cigarette products in the city of Laguna Niguel, and directs draft to return with the draft ordinance to be presented at a future city council meeting, and I'll make a caveat that I want that as soon as possible.
And I'll second that.
And that's seconded by Councilwoman Reins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Anyone in the community want to say aye too? Go ahead. I'll let you vote. Okay, good. Thank you very much. It passes unanimously, and I want to say a very, very strong thank you to the community. Your social media posts, letters, and recommendations were truly inspiring, and I wanted to say thank you to that. Yeah, we've got some of these flyers, and the Mayor Pro Tem is going to put those out there in case you want to grab them on the way out.
We'll bring this back to our next council meeting on November 5th.
That's right. Our next one's on number five. So thank you very much for that. Please spread the word, and we'll do our job and try to do the same thing. We took this out of order for just a second. We are moving now to Community Development Item Number One. Councilwoman Reins, just for the record, has recused herself from this item, so she's left the dais. Our first, our second discussion evening is Community Development Item Number One, and that is an appeal of the Planning Commission action to sustain, excuse me, the administrative approval of a request for an extension of a legal non-conforming side yard setback to accommodate a small residential addition. Community Development Director Dunia, I've asked if there's a staff report for this item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. The staff presentation on this item will be provided by Development Services Manager John Morgan.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Morgan.
Good evening, Mayor Jennings, Mayor Pro Tem Davies, and council members. As just mentioned, the item before you this evening is the Appeal of Minor Adjustment To start, the property that is the subject of the appeal is located at 16 Haverhill, which is within the Beacon Hill community, generally located northeast of the Niguel Road and Ridgeway Avenue intersection. Existing development on the lot includes a two-story residence which was built in the 1980s. Moving on, the next slide illustrates the existing site conditions on the property. Notably, the home includes a side yard setback of more than five feet on the right side and a setback of just under three feet on the left side. The city's current development standards for this zoning district require a minimum side yard setback of five feet from each side property line. This existing side yard setback deficiency on one side is consistent throughout this particular neighborhood. When these tracts were built in 1980s, prior to city incorporation, they were subject to the development standards of the county of Orange. The minimum setbacks at that time from side property lines was an aggregate minimum of 10 feet. In other words, a home could be plotted as close as zero feet from one side property long, excuse me, from one property line as long as the other side had a minimum setback of 10 feet. In the case of 16 Haverhill, as just mentioned, the house is setback just under three feet on the left side and over seven feet on the right. The zoning code considers the homes within this Beacon Hill tract non-conforming structures due to this prevailing side yard setback deficiency. As defined in the zoning code, a non-conforming structure is a structure that was built in conformance with the applicable zoning regulations at the time it was built, but due to subsequent ordinance changes, does not conform to current development standards. The zoning code expressly allows for the expansion of non-conforming structures subject to a defined criteria and the approval of a minor adjustment. To provide some additional context, we have some photos here of the home at 16 Haverhill from some different vantage points. This is obviously from, this is the street view. You can see 16 and Haverhill, which is the applicant's residence, and the appellant's home next door at 18. This shows you kind of a side yard profile between the two homes, and then we've also got one from a rear vantage point of the two homes. Okay, moving on to the proposed project, in May of 2019, the homeowner of 16 Haverhill, Ms. Liz Johnson, applied for a minor adjustment to allow what the zoning code qualifies as a small residential addition to the non-conforming portion of the residence. This slide provides a site plan overview of the proposed non-conforming side yard setback extension of the home. The addition would not create a new nonconformity and would be entirely within the existing building height envelope. The overall project consists of a 450-square-foot addition to the existing residence. Of that new building area, approximately 42 square feet would extend into the side setback, about 21 square feet on each story. This next slide is a bird's-eye view of the home and the location of the proposed addition. Next up, we'll give you kind of a summary of the approval actions by the city to date and the appeals filed by the neighbor. So to start us off, on July 2nd, the Community Development Department approved Minor Adjustment 1906 for the requested extension of a legal non-conforming side yard setback. The neighboring property owner, Ms. Tammy Storino, at 18 Haverhill subsequently filed an appeal of the administrative approval to the Planning Commission. And then on August 27th, the Planning Commission unanimously denied the appeal and sustained the original action in approving Minor Adjustment 19-06. And then on September 11th, Ms. Storino filed an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to the city council. The grounds for the appeal generally consist of challenging the city's interpretation of the zoning provisions related to the existing fence in the side yard of 16 Haverhill. Appeal issues 1 and 2 discussed in the staff report, and the required minor adjustment findings related to the project's consistency with surrounding land uses, and the enlargement of the non-conforming condition at 16 Haverhill would provide a reasonable use of the properties. These are appeal issues 3 through 4 discussed in the staff report. Related to the latter, staff continues to support the minor adjustment findings as made in administrative approval subsequently made by the Planning Commission and those before the city council this evening in the draft resolution. Related to the former, specifically the fence, staff did want to spend some time discussing this issue as the appellant continues to refute staff's position on this matter. This was also one of the primary discussion items raised by the appellant's attorney at the Planning Commission meeting. So kind of going back to the prior slide that shows the proposed addition, in question is this green, which is highlighted in green here, is the existing side yard fence. That's at the rear corner of the home. Moving along here, the fence can also be seen in this elevation view. In order to extend the building wall for the home, it will be necessary to remove approximately nine feet eight inches of that existing fence, which is noted here on this slide. A key point that has been raised by the appellant is that both the fence and residence at 16 Haverhill are both non-conforming structures. Since the zoning code does not allow an increase in height of an existing non-conforming structure, the appellant contends that the new addition area within the house's setback would not be eligible for a minor adjustment because it is taller than the existing five-foot-tall fence it would be replacing. Addressing the vinyl fence, there are no zoning provisions limiting where a fence may be located on a residential property. The only limitation is the height in which a fence may be built. Fences within a home's minimum side setbacks are limited to a maximum height of six feet. The existing fence is five feet tall, complies with development standards, and is a legal, conforming structure. It should be noted that the existence of fences six feet or lower are located within side setbacks of residential properties citywide. This is quite common. It's also important to point out that although a fence in the building wall of the addition may both be viewed as structures, they are separate and distinct from one another. The zoning code clearly distinguishes between the two. Under the definition of a fence in the zoning code, it states that a building wall shall not be considered a fence. The existing five-foot-tall fence has no bearing on the residential addition or the project's minor adjustment eligibility. And with that in closing, as detailed in the staff report, staff continues to support the necessary findings in conditionally approving the project and recommends that the city council adopt Resolution 2019-1298, denying the appeal and sustaining the original action approving Minor Adjustment 19-06 subject to conditions. That concludes staff's presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. Also, just want to make note that you should hopefully have received some correspondence that was submitted to the city subsequent to the publication of the staff report on Friday. Thank you.
And I'd just note for the record that we have that additional correspondence in front of us, which includes correspondence from what appear to be neighbors, as well as some correspondence, I believe, from the appellant.
That's correct.
Great, thank you very much. I have seen that, and I have considered it. Before we move on to hearing from the project appellant and the project applicant, I wanted to see if anyone in the council had any questions for staff or Mr. Morgan? No questions at this time? Okay, let's, I wanted to lay out some sequencing of tonight to make sure that we have a uniform process for both sides. So we'll be inviting the project applicant, I'm sorry, the appellant, to speak first, followed then by the project applicant. Both the project appellant, as well as the project applicant, will each have 10 minutes to speak. Subsequent to your respective presentations, and after any comments for or against the project from members of the public that may wish to speak, you will then be afforded an additional three minutes to provide any follow-up remarks or closing comments. And we will go in that same order for those three minutes, with the appellant going first and the applicant going second. I'd now like to invite the project appellant, Ms. Tammy Storino, I'm sorry, Storino, I stumbled the first time, I won't do it second, so, to the podium to present her grounds for an appeal on Minor Adjustment 1906. Thank you so much, and we appreciate this.
Well, first, as a member of the Orange County American Cancer Society Council, I just want to thank everybody for the ban on vaping. I think it's very important. We've all lost many people from that. My father, Henry, and I live at 18 Haverhill Road in Laguna Niguel. We've lived there for 13 years, and we really appreciate you all hearing our appeal tonight. The removal of the applicant's fence and erection of a two-story wall has serious health problems, property value, and enjoyment of our property issues. First, due to my father's health issues, his body cannot absorb sufficient levels of vitamin D by pill form, so needs natural vitamin D daily, which he gets just relaxing in his chair, as shown in the photo in the last packet, the last page of the packet just being handed out. The applicants have incorrectly asserted that their chimney currently blocks sunlight into our family room. Clearly from the photo recently taken, you can see direct sunlight floods our family room, perfect for my father's health. There are also pictures that were included in the materials presented to you, but they've been photocopied so many times, we wanted to give you the before pictures and the after, so you can clearly see the situation that we're facing here. The applicant has incorrectly stated that I had replaced the family room windows and that the UVB glazing will block virtually all vitamin D. This is untrue. I did not replace the family room windows, and in fact, they were replaced in the late 1990s by the prior owner. I'm not a glazing expert, nor is the applicant, as far as I'm aware, so I can't say that the glazing what that was at that time, but the windows are over 25 years old, and as such, glazing protection naturally deteriorates over time. All I do know is that with the natural sunlight he gets at home, his vitamin D levels are currently acceptable. Secondly, there's definitely- Secondly, there's definitely going to be a decrease in our property value, not an increase as the applicant stays. Our other neighbor, Julie Bloomberg, has been a real estate broker in the area for decades. She's very familiar with the property values locally and knows what does or does not impact value. Unfortunately, Julie's out of the country on vacation, so she could not attend tonight, but at the planning commission meeting in August, Julie presented that she had recently listed and sold the property locally. The day after they went into escrow, the neighbor next door put up story polls that would partially block the buyer's view, nothing like what is being proposed to us. The seller had reduced the sales price by $70,000 to save that sale. Julie can provide and will provide support of the situation if needed for the council when she returns to the U.S., but views in California have significant value. The proposed erection of a wall will definitely lower our value of our home by $50,000 at least. Third, the proposed wall will turn our light and bright family room into a dark and dingy grotto, and this just is not right. When we did a remodel several years ago, the applicants were very supportive, for which we were appreciative. One day, when Liz was reviewing our plan, she commented on a window that we had planned to install that would face her property. Now Liz did not specifically ask for us to reconsider the window, but it was clear from her tone and comment, she would prefer not to have the window overlooking her property, so we removed it from the plan. When doing our remodel, we took our neighbor's impact very seriously on both sides of our home, as we did not want our remodel to ruin our neighbor relationships as had happened down the block with a prior minor adjustment. To this day, neighbors down the block are still feuding over a minor adjustment approved by the city. It's a shame how opposing neighbors have been treated when trying to defend their rights under the zoning codes. And frankly, I have far more important things to do right now to get my dad well, but my father believes what is right is right, and what is proposed based upon the city's own zoning code is plain wrong. We're simple folks, doesn't matter how many neighbors support the minor adjustment, as it's not their life and their property values being impacted, it's ours. So here we are tonight after a long day of treatments. I hope that this council seriously reviews the code sections our attorney will now present and stop approving this minor adjustment that does not qualify under the code sections. And at this time, the remaining time will be presented by George Pickett on our behalf.
Great, thank you, Ms. Storino.
For the record, Mayor, there are six minutes, eight seconds left on the time.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The floor is yours, sir. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor Protem and council members. First of all, I want to commend you for passing the resolution on the ordinance banning the flavored vaping products.
Thank you, sir.
That's a very commendable action. The cusp of the issue here is, Ms. Storino's spoken to the impact, and now I'm speaking to the legal issues. On the legal side, we have a disagreement as to the application of the city zoning code relative to non-conforming structures. We are in agreement that a non-conforming structure can be extended, but only horizontally, not vertically. Where we disagree is that the city is saying that the fence is a conforming structure. Our position is the fence is being modified with a new non-conforming structure, which is the extension of the building wall. We're not saying that the wall is a fence, we're saying the wall is a new non-conforming structure that replaces and modifies the fence. So the issue becomes, is the fence a conforming or non-conforming structure? The city asserts that there's a code section that states that, that it shows that it is a conforming structure, and that is zoning code section 91352C3, which states in pertinent part, "The maximum fence height shall be six feet within any required rear or side setback area." Our response is, so what? That's addressing the height of the fence. It's not addressing the fact that it is within the setback and is therefore a non-conforming But the city is asserting that that somehow establishes an exemption and somehow addresses conforming and non-conforming when it doesn't. And it doesn't create an exemption from the restriction, the prohibition, on extending a non-conforming structure vertically. And the end result of the city's position is, is that while you couldn't move a fence, increase a fence vertically, as a fence, you can do that as a wall. You can modify the fence as a wall, and you can have a two-story wall in place of a five foot fence. That makes no sense. And I direct you to the appeal that Ms. Storino filed dated September 11th on the bottom of page two and the top of page three, because I think that is an important point for the city to understand. Two other points that the city says, well, there's no zoning provisions limiting where a fence may be located, and fences are allowed throughout all residential zones. So what? That's irrelevant. The issue is whether or not the fence is a conforming or non-conforming structure. And even though it's non-conforming, it is allowed under the zoning code. It's there. It's non-conforming. It is subject to the restriction prohibiting an extension that is vertical, it can only be horizontal. Relative to impacts, the city is saying that the proposed addition would be expected to have the same impact whether it's where it is located or where it would be as if conformed to a five-foot setback. Well, that's not the case. The closer it is to my client's property, obviously the greater the impact it's going to have. And then it cites, there are four other minor exemptions that were given that they say are precedent. They are not legal precedent. The city cannot rely on them as legal precedent, and they are factually substantially less non-conforming in their square footage than the proposed project. But the fact of the matter is that the city should not be repeating past mistakes. Those projects violate the same issue that we are addressing and should not have been approved, in particular, the property at 26 Haverhill. The city also asserts that it would be outside the scope and core of the staff to dictate design, because my client has proposed various alternative designs that would not impact her property in the manner in which the proposed project does. And the city has ignored those, saying, that's outside our scope. And yet the city is finding that the proposed project is a reasonable use of the property and is necessary to provide continuity of usable space in the structure.
You have 30 seconds.
And that it cannot find without addressing, at least cannot find credibly without addressing, is there an alternative that would not impact the manner in which you see there? And there is. Yet the city is saying, we're not going to go there. There is nothing in the code that says that the city can't go there, and it should go there, but it is refusing to address that issue.
That's your time.
Counsel, thank you very much for your comments.
In conclusion, this should be subject to a variance and not a minor adjustment proceeding because it does not qualify as a minor adjustment. Thank you.
Great, thank you, counsel. We will now move on to our project applicant, Ms. Liz Johnson, to the podium to present her position. Ms. Johnson, you also have 10 minutes, so thank you very much, and welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. My name's Liz Johnson, and I live at 16 Haverhill Road, and I'm the applicant for the minor adjustment 19-06. I believe that the city has addressed all the issues related to Ms. Storino's challenges regarding the City of Laguna Nigal zoning code. I've learned a lot over the past several months and appreciate the city's staff's explanation to the city council, and therefore my comments will focus on surrounding ancillary thoughts around Ms. Storino's concerns. I set out on a journey to remodel my house seven months ago. As a consummate rules follower, I went through all the required processes in a detailed manner in order to gain all appropriate approvals. The first stop was the Beacon Hill Homeowners Association Architectural Review Committee. There were two meetings that followed my application's submittal. Ms. Storino attended the first one to express her objections to my project. After that meeting, I received a request from the HOA Architectural Review Committee requesting two minor adjustments to my application, no pun intended. The first request was that I install story polls on the property representing the exterior remodel modifications. The second request was to modify the exterior siding to reflect the same siding that exists today, horizontal. I had proposed a vertical siding on the top and keeping the horizontal on the bottom. They asked that I keep it horizontal as it is today, consistent with what it is today. I complied with these requests and resubmitted to the HOA. This prompted a second meeting and in order for the board to review and approve. At the second meeting, Ms. Storino was in attendance to again object to the project reemphasizing her original concerns. At this time, I proposed a couple compromises that I felt would address her stated concerns. Those compromises were rejected by Ms. Storino. Later in the meeting, I invited the Architectural Review Committee to come to my home and to Ms. Storino's home to review the project so they could get a live perspective from both residences. All of the members came to our homes. On March 25th, I received approval from the HOA despite Ms. Storino's concerns. And I bring this up because we have a pretty rigorous HOA process to get things approved on remodels, so I think it's important that you know that in two meetings, I was able to get my project approved through the HOA. As you have learned, my project requires a minor adjustment because I live in a legal non-conforming home. I submitted my minor adjustment application to the City of Laguna Nigal on April 29th, as you know, and I have since received planning staff and commission approvals despite Ms. Storino's constant objections and appeals. I'm just a homeowner who wants to remodel my house. It's a modest renovation to a home that was built in the 1980s. I am blessed to have an incredible ocean view, and this renovation would enhance this view as well as provide for many much-needed interior updates. Further, I'm not requesting anything that has not been previously approved in Beacon Hill or the City of Laguna Nigal, which required a minor adjustment. Precedent does exist. I'm extremely saddened that Ms. Storino has chosen to challenge my remodel as much as she has. Prior to this, we were friendly neighbors. Since I have lived next door to Ms. Storino, as she stated, I have approved and supported every improvement she has made to her home, despite the fact that I did not care for some personally. In fact, when Ms. Storino did her rear home extension, the Beacon Hill HOA sent her request to install story polls, which is now a requirement of any remodel done in the community. This was very upsetting to Ms. Storino because it would require additional cost and delay to her project. I offered to go to the HOA and plead with them to dismiss this requirement as I was completely in approval of her project. Never did I give any indication of not wanting a window, ever. I was completely in approval. The HOA listened and granted Ms. Storino her approvals without the time and delay and cost of the story polls, which can be thousands of dollars. Again, I approved every improvement Ms. Storino has made to her home without objection because that's what neighbors do. Speaking of neighbors, I'd like to emphasize the incredible neighbor and community support that I've received on my remodel project. My initial application for minor adjustment included a signed petition by eight of my neighbors. Since that time, the city has received an additional 18 emails and letters from neighbors expressing their support. In fact, I'd like all those in attendance tonight to raise their hands if they support my remodel. Thank you all for being here. These are Beacon Hill and Laguna Nigal residents who believe in private property rights and support for my project. This is just a modest renovation to my home that is in compliance with HOA guidelines and the City of Laguna Nigal zoning code. I respectfully request that the city council reject Ms. Storino's appeal and sustain approval of my project. Thank you for your time and listening.
Great, thank you, Ms. Johnson. At this time, I wanted to take a moment at the conclusion of those presentations to ask if any of the council has any questions for staff or through the applicant or the appellant. Okay, seeing none at this time, I'm going to move on to open the meeting for comments from the public on minor adjustment MA 1906, and the same rules will apply for speakers. I have one request to speak for them. The rules will be three minutes per speaker. The one speaker is Carol Faulkner.
Good evening, welcome, thank you. Please state your name and address. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members and staff. I appreciate your time. Before I get started, I'd like to say I, myself, have been a resident of Laguna Nigal since 1980, before it was an incorporated city, and thank you for doing a fabulous job.
So you're a newbie, so.
I'm here to support the, to the resolution of 2019-1298. I have been a resident at Beacon Hill for 15 years, and I am currently a member of the Board of Directors for a sub-association of our master association. With that said, I have very firsthand knowledge of our strict architectural guidelines and our CCNRs, and I will confirm what Ms. Johnson said, they are not an easy task to go through. It's my understanding that, and as Liz said, her plans have been approved by our HOA, and to me, that means that the improvements will not have any detrimental impact on any adjacent neighbor, surrounding neighbors, or the community. I personally have reviewed the plans, I've walked the property, I've seen the story polls, and I think the addition would be a great improvement to our community. Our community is a very aging community, and we encourage improvements, and I believe that they will increase our property values. I believe that when a homeowner has homeowner approval, that they should be able to proceed with the improvements to their personal residence. And with that said, I thank you for your time, and I support the resolution. Thank you.
Ms. Faulkner, thank you very much for your time. Unless there's any other requests to speak for, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comments on that. While there being no further comments, I would invite the project appellant, followed by the project applicant, back to the podium for any remarks they wish to make, limited up to three minutes. Mr. Pickett, welcome.
Thank you. Much has been made of the HOA approval. I should note that it has expired. There is no approval, at least based upon the record that we have. The approval was given, and it's in your package, on March 27th of this year. It was for 180 days. It states that the approval is effective for 180 days and automatically terminates on this date if the improvement has not been completed within such time. So the approval is moot. The compromise that was made in the design review process was to plant some trees between my client's property and the wall, basically to mask the wall. In essence, to add more mass and more obstruction to only compound the problem, and that's why my client rejected that proposal. My client has made various design proposals to move the space that they're trying to add forward into a courtyard, and those have been summarily rejected. And the city, as I indicated, has not considered that, has said that's not the city's function, and yet the city is saying that this is a necessary adjustment. They can't make that judgment unless they have looked at whether there are less impactful alternatives, and they have not done that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pickett. Now I'd like to invite the project applicant back up. If there's any rebuttal? Thank you, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Actually, that is. Actually, that is incorrect. I did get an extension from the HOA for a 12-month period. So I am still under compliance there. That was received, I have it in email if you'd like to see it. I also have a copy at home. I'll submit that to the city. I'm not going to consider any modifications to the plan. This effort to remodel my home is to expand on the ocean view and the submission that Ms. Starino offered, it does not work for what I'm trying to accomplish. So, thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Johnson. City Attorney Ennis, is there any comments that you wish to make?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I do have a few clarifying comments I'd like to make because the appellant has made several arguments regarding the interpretation of the municipal code. Provisions applicable to the appeal. First, I concur with staff's conclusion that a wall of a house is not a fence and that this application does not involve an increase in the height of a fence. Therefore, I concur with staff that a variance to seek an increase in the height of the fence is not required for this home addition. Second, I reviewed the municipal code, conferred with staff, and agree with their interpretation that this type of home addition in a setback can be processed under a minor adjustment permit process and not through a variance. I also concur that this project meets the threshold criteria and limitations required for the minor adjustment permit process. Third, the code sets out a series of findings that are required to approve a minor adjustment permit, including the additional finding required when the application involves an alteration to a non-conforming structure. And when you consider the required findings and the specific finding on impacts on surrounding uses, the council is permitted to consider the overall neighborhood context and not solely the project's relationship to one property in determining the significance of any particular impact. Thus, if the project is consistent with that existing neighborhood development pattern and does not substantially deviate from that pattern, this finding can be satisfied. The draft for a resolution includes sufficient findings to support that particular finding along with the others. Finally, I'd like to just remark on the point about the prior minor adjustments being approved and that we cannot rely on them as legal precedent. When the city has given approvals based upon similar code provisions and interpret the code and apply that interpretation consistently in a subsequent application, that is permissible to rely upon the prior interpretation in making a new approval. So I do consider those prior approvals as being sufficient legal precedent for your decision. Happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
I'd just like to thank City Attorney Ennis because you did answer my questions that I had written down. So thank you.
Great, thanks. Councilwoman Menega.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like yourself, for eight years, I served with the Planning Commission and we've had quite a few different cases under either CUP, conditional use permit, variance, or minor adjustment that typically is done by the city staff. In my view, having reviewed the entire documentation and all the correspondence between the project applicant and the staff, in my view, the applicant has done all the due diligence. The applicant has done what she was supposed to do to talk to the Architectural Committee of the HOA as well as going through the normal process. She's presented her case to the Planning Commission, which is a quasi-entity in the city and ultimately now we are discussing it because it was appealed by the lady that happens to be living next door. In light of all those and hearing what our city attorney said, I do concur with your assessment and ultimately, this application does not constitute any prejudicial abuse of the discretion of the city of Laguna Niguel as a municipal corporation. Therefore, I'm in support of the city's staff recommendation.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Menega, Mayor Potem Davies?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for letting me know. One of my concerns was if that HOA was extended. I'm president of my HOA and on the Architectural Committee. I do know how hard and difficult it is. So the fact that that was extended and you're approved, that was very important to me. And also, I don't know if we have the answer to this, but in the prior approvals with projects like this, did we ever have a repeal?
No. Of the past minor adjustments for similar extensions to non-conforming structures, this is the first appeal we've received.
Thank you, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. I want to comment. I also spent a fair number of years on the Planning Commission. This is bringing back some old memories. Before us tonight is a tremendous amount of documents. I mean, a lot of information. For the sake of both the applicant and the appellant, I want to let you know that I read it all. I understand it. Deep inside me someplace is an apology about how much paperwork is required for this process, but I do appreciate everyone doing that and then included in that is the staff and its analysis. I had questions similar to those that have been raised tonight. I had discussions with our city attorney about those and I appreciate your clarification points tonight, sir. So thank you very much for that. And I too believe that the applicant seems to have carried the day in this and based upon the facts in front of us that it'd be my recommendation that we make a motion, and I'll make one, to adopt Resolution Number 2019 1298, denying that appeal and sustaining the original action and approving the minor adjustment MA 1906, subject to the conditions. And I would invite a second.
Second.
Second the motion.
Okay, I think I heard Councilwoman Jenaway first on that. So it's moved by the mayor, it's seconded by Councilwoman Jenaway. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Note that it carries 401 with Councilwoman Rains abstaining. Great, thank you very much. And thank you for everyone, thank you for all your participation. Thank you for the community that came out and support. And against. This concludes our discussion items for this evening. We will now move on to other business and council reports. I want to do that only after Councilwoman Rains returns to the dais. She's on her way, I'm told. We should have some lovely hold music while that happens. For the record, Councilwoman Rains has rejoined us on the dais. We are now on to other business and council reports. And I will start to my left with Councilwoman Menega.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Having attended a number of regularly scheduled meetings, I just wanted to go over the takeaways from two very important meetings. The first one is when I attended the Orange County Council of Governments monthly meeting at the city of Irvine, there was a professor that showed up from UCI talking about the beach erosion episode in our area and it was pretty interesting that based on the survey and the data that his students had collected between 1994 and 2018, it is interesting to know that at Doheny Beach as well as Capo Beach and also San Frío, that we've had three meters per year as an average of beach erosion, meaning losing the beach. And I asked the professor and all his experts that, okay, we are much closer to Laguna Beach as well. What about Laguna Beach? And he said that between 1994 and 2018, they have no evidence that the same activities happen to be going on in Laguna Beach area of our neighborhoods. So having said that, the good news is that, to some extent, Laguna Beach is under control, but Dana Point and San Juan Capistrano, San Clemente and northern portion of San Yugo County are the ones that they have to be importing a lot of sands. Basically, they have to do a lot of preventive measures so that the same thing that has happened in other parts of the country doesn't happen in our area. Number one, number two, good news with regard to the SCAG and Reno Regional Housing Needs Assessment is that the report that I received from SCAG CEO on Thursday is that because of the overwhelming support of the public officials and the emails that they have received from citizens and from the city officials, SCAG management has decided to change it, to introduce a new hybrid for the Reno measurements, which is very good for all of us. So based on the new hybrid, they are going to be revising that. They are going to be revising the formulas, they're going to be revising the calculator. And as a matter of fact, there's a meeting tomorrow, which is the Reno's Subcommittee Meeting. And tomorrow, they are going to be introducing the new calculator that would be basically coming up with new criteria to do that. Now, in a nutshell, the new suggested methodology by SCAG staff is that they are going to be combining existing population in conjunction with the projected population for all different areas. Out of 191 cities that fall into SCAG's organization as an MPO, over 50% of them would be the ones that would be supporting this new methodology. That remains to be seen. I'm going to be at SCAG on Thursday to get more information. I asked them to provide us, to provide me, so I can share with the city the new measurements, the new calculator. They said they're still doing quality control check to make sure. And again, I expressed my feeling that South Orange County cities are not happy with the way that Reno process has been moving on because we don't want to be penalized because we don't have a lot of high-paying jobs here. We don't have a lot of high-paying job centers. We don't have comprehensive transit system like other cities in Northern Orange County, like city of Irvine, like city of Anaheim, like a lot of other cities in LA that they're going to benefit from the new Reno system and we, all the cities in South Orange County is going to be penalized regardless. But we are trying to reduce that potential negative adverse impact in our communities that we don't have to be providing more housing units as we are supposed to because then it's going to go to other cities. So short to the point, as soon as we receive the final system calculator, we'll share it with you and it's going to go to the committee on October 21st. So, and then we are going to have the official voting on that beginning of next year. And by the way, I requested from SCAG board, everyone accepted that we are going to have the meeting right here at this city council chamber. I pushed it for beginning of January. So we are going to have all the management staff from SCAG to show up right here and also all their consultants so that we can discuss it and we can just share it with our residents. Thank you.
Yeah, we have questions. So on behalf of the council and the rest of the city, I just want to say thank you to Councilwoman Menega for helping us on that. I know that this is a very sensitive topic, but I really appreciate your leadership on it and your input on it on the SCAG level. I have an article coming out, I think, tomorrow or soon and it's on Reno and I've called it the worst four-letter word that no one's ever heard of. And it will change the complexion it already has of South County cities and that isn't for the positive, in my view. And it is stripping local control in one of the most critical functions that cities have local control over, which is our zoning and our development standards and almost everything. So I appreciate the fight. I encourage you to keep doing that and I'm very glad to have those people on our property come January. So thank you very much for that. Let's move on to Councilwoman Jenaway.
Thank you, Mayor. On September 19th, I attended the presentation for the 2019-2020 Orange County Community Indicators. And this is a work of the Orange County Business Council and many other entities within the county. And what it does, it tracks Orange County's economy, health, education, workforce, housing, infrastructure, water delivery, transportation, all of those things. And those are all important things that we need to look at as municipalities for our future planning. Just, I picked a few numbers from it just to give you some information. Specific to Laguna Niguel, you know, I've always said the greatest asset in our city is our residents and how they participate. So in Laguna Niguel, our residents are 123% as likely as the national average to participate in public activities and 159% as likely as the national average to attend a city council or school board meeting. As we saw tonight, there were many residents here filling our council chambers. So we do have a very active community. One of the numbers that I think that is a number none of us like to see, especially if we're a parent, is in Orange County, youth depression continues to rise. And over the last 10 years, the major depression and mood disorder hospitalizations have more than doubled. So this is something that we really need to not only monitor but do what we can do as a community to stem that. And that's one of the reasons why our youth committee is working with the Wellness and Prevention Center on the Together for Teens workshop, which will be taking place on October 12th at Capo Valley High School. So if you have a teenager, your parent of the teenager and the teenagers themselves should be attending the Together for Teens. There'll be many breakout sessions that they can choose from and you should be seeing more information from that on our city website or contact our Department of Parks and Recreation because Gretchen Malcolm does work with the youth committee. And this is something that the youth committee took up on their own as an initiative because they are very touched by what is going on with their peers. So that's something as a community, we all need to be cognizant of the growing epidemic, I'd hate to say that word, but of youth depression. Also, as I keep saying, the proportion of the senior population is increasing in Orange County. In 20 years, it's projected that one quarter of the Orange County population will be older adults and then 20 years after that, that one-third of the Orange County population will be older adults. So that's something that all cities in Orange County need to be planning for. And speaking of older adults, the very next day, September 20th, I attended the Senior Expo at Sea Country Senior and Community Center. So congratulations to Parks and Recreation staff for another successful senior expo. Sea Country was jam-packed with people getting information, with vendors, with service providers, with nonprofits, lots of great information out there for our community. And people were just really happy to be having that opportunity to be getting that information. So thank you to all who participated. This Saturday, right here at City Hall, is the Fifth Annual Veterans Resource Fair, sponsored by our first mayor, Senator Pat Bates. And that'll be from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So all veterans in the community are welcome to attend. There'll be a couple of breakout sessions for information for them. There'll also be booths or vendors with tables that they will have information. And I understand it is Carl's Jr. that is providing lunch. So that's right here at City Hall from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. this Saturday. And that's it for today. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. And I'm just pleased that when you said speaking of older adults, you didn't throw it back to me at that time. So well done. Councilwoman Rains?
Thank you. I just wanted to, one of the things that I serve on is the Housing Committee for the California cities. And we had a presentation this past week on what Councilwoman Menega was talking about. We had a presentation from Dr. Tita from UCI. They're in the process of conducting a study that will show what building, affordable housing and workforce housing in communities by taking underperforming retail centers will do. And they're testing three specific areas. One is what it does for public safety, what it does to our property values and how it affects sales tax. So that is going to be finished sometime in the early spring. So hopefully that'll give us some indicators on how we can utilize that towards meeting our Reno numbers. So I'm looking forward to being able to report on that. Also, on September 21st, as the OCFA representative, I got to spend the day with some of our firefighters and 118 volunteers here in Laguna Niguel in one of our older communities, one of our original neighborhoods, the Niguel Hills community. And I got to walk the neighborhood with a team of four people. And we... And I got to walk the neighborhood with a team of four people, and we, not just myself, but the 118 volunteers throughout the community, we installed 335 smoke alarms in 86 homes. These were all free. They provided direct education to 242 residents, and all 418 of the residents received information on fire safety. If you missed them and you're not there, or if you are a community resident and you want someone to come and do that, you can contact the Red Cross, and it's a free service. They will come check your smoke alarms, make sure you have the right ones in your house, and they will install them for you free of charge. It was a lot of fun, and past Board of Director and our Mayor Protem Laurie-Davies was actually there with me, so we had a good time visiting with everyone. So that was a really fun event, and I got to walk those hills in Laguna Nigal again, so it was fun. And finally, tomorrow, the GSA at 4:00 p.m. is going to be doing a public meeting regarding our federal building here in Laguna Nigal, so if you're a community member and you're interested in what might be going on that's happening tomorrow at 4:00 p.m., and that's it.
Thank you. I'd just like to point out that all the hills in Laguna Nigal seem to be uphill, so, having walked them. So, Mayor Protem Davies.
Thank you. Just real briefly, the ACCLC had a meeting with helpers. They came down here, we had a few of the board members and Marcy Frost, and it was actually some positive news because typically, when you go and you hear about the unfunded liability, it's not a good thing. The bad news is it's going to take us about 10 years to get to where we need to go, but the good news is they actually have some great board members that are realizing what we need to do to make things better, and realizing also in regards to when it comes to investments, that we have to be very careful not to exclude environmental, social investments, that we're losing a lot of money that way, and they're coming to that knowledge, so that's a good thing. And we also spoke about different cities such as ourselves, that we now have a trust, and that we're putting money aside in a trust as well as making our payments, but this allows us then to make the investments, which we can probably make a lot more than what they're doing at this point. So we're doing everything right. Again, the next 10 years is going to be difficult for a lot of cities, but there is light at the tunnel if they continue on the track that they're going. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Mayor Protem Davies. Wanted to note that tomorrow, we have a CUSD roundtable meeting, which we have myself and members of the Capstone Unified School District staff. One of the topics, coincidentally, is about vaping monitors and talking about what we can do to try to help get those installed. We are told that the middle schools have a particular problem, they actually have staff stationed in and around the restrooms because they have such a very high incidence of vaping, and these vaping monitors detect the vapors from that, and they sound, and it's a little bit easier to do that, and it's also a deterrent to keep it off-campus perhaps. So in any event, that's the discussion we'll be having tomorrow. A very, very important day in the City of Laguna Nigal is October 15th, which is our strategic planning workshop. We have had a tremendous outpouring from the city. I suppose it's well over 1,000, I haven't seen the final numbers, I don't still, you got a number?
It's over, I think, 1,300 now.
Love it even more. So over 1,300, and I even know that after the deadline, I saw that they're still coming in, so there's lots and lots that have been coming.
The deadline is now over.
Deadline's done, so.
Because we have to tally the results.
We've already started counting, but I wanted to say thank you to the residents and to everybody who was encouraging that and staff to get that out. That's coming back to us on October 15th, so we will be here in this council room at 9:00 a.m. That is a public meeting, as I understand?
Actually, we're going to be in the community room, and that's actually a workshop for the council and the department heads to actually work on the draft plan that will be coming to the council meeting on November 19th.
Good, okay, thank you. So I knew I had the October date, so on the 19th, that's when the public comments are allowed. Thank you. So all of that's coming up, very exciting stuff. We've got a tremendous amount of input, and I'm looking for even more from the council. We have been doing, I've been doing, along with Erin from our management analyst, have been doing videos welcoming new businesses and restaurants to town. I think we're up to five, we did two more today. They've been inordinately well-received, I can tell you the businesses love it, and hopefully the residents are picking up the clue and enjoying some of our neat restaurants, and we just had a great time with them today. There is a Meet the Mayor, which we've euphemistically called Straight Talk Round Donuts, coming up on the 10th of October, and that's at 8:30 at Sea Country, so invite anybody if you've got questions. Love to see you, come out. There's a lot of stuff going on in town, you may have questions about that, you may want to talk about the strategic plan, anything's fair game at those meetings, so come out and talk. Happy to do that. I wanted to echo something that Councilwoman Reins said, which is this meeting tomorrow afternoon about the federal building. I'm not going to call it misinformation, it doesn't rise to the level of fake news, if you'll forgive the pun, but it is difficult to understand exactly what their process is, so we did a little bit of digging and prepared a statement to try to understand what that is. So let me, forgive me for reading it for a second, but the GSA, which is the General Services Administration, which owns and operates the Chet Holley Field Federal Building, which we call the Ziggurat, recently informed us at the city that it is beginning a federal environmental review process to analyze options for future accommodations of existing building tenants. No details on options under consideration have been shared with the city, us yet, or the public as of yet. However, the GSA has assured us that it is their goal to work in partnership with the community in considering any potential fiscal and operational changes to that property. This is very welcome news, as you can imagine, we've been singing this song since I've lived in Laguna Nigal, and what we can do with that property, you know, it just sparks one's mind to expand what's possible there. Which has offered the host of first several public outreach meetings on this very topic, to be conducted by the GSA tomorrow, the first of which is from 4:00 p.m. across the hall here in the community room, which is what Councilwoman Reins was discussing. Anyone interesting in knowing more about the federal process and providing input directly to the GSA is encouraged to attend. We will also be there and be providing regular updates to you, our residents, about what that is, and I can tell you that there is no subject that garners more of my attention in the moment than what's going on at the Ziggurat because we've been getting calls from all over the place about what's possible there, and I know that part of our strategic plan, at least my part of my discussions, will be talking about that for sure. So with that, wanted to say thank you. I was remiss, and part of our agenda item, I skipped over our comm dev team and our Economic Development Report, I wasn't sure if you all had anything to share, we did have a meeting, but wanted to invite Director Junior or Service Manager Morgan to chime in if there was anything to add.
I think probably the most significant update is that we held our roundtable with the commercial shopping center community, it was incredibly well-received. This is, I believe, the third meeting that we've held, and this was an outgrowth of the city's economic development ad hoc efforts over the past two years. And so we are continuing to work with the business community, we are taking their suggestions on ways to improve our existing processes, particularly for permitting of new businesses, new restaurants, and as part of that meeting, City Manager Luterno was also in attendance and was able to discuss with the commercial owners and operators the strategic plan process, so we're seeking their input as part of that as well. So we'll be looking forward to continuing to work with them and strengthen those relationships.
Great, thank you very much. There's also abundant good news about new things coming to town, filling some of our spaces, so we'll get into those after we know a little bit more about what those contracts look like. So thank you very much, let's go around the room for a second, I'll start with Chief of Police Services Matt McDaniel.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Other than I'll see you tomorrow morning to a National Walk Today School, Walk to School Day. Great, thank you. City Attorney Ennis.
Thank you, just glad to be back. Thank you.
We are glad to have you, although we were jealous while you were away, so good to see you. Director Ellenson.
Nothing tonight.
Great, thank you very much, Steve. Director Junior?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, great.
I'll keep it going, nothing to add.
Oh, good job.
Nothing for me, Mayor.
Good, I don't even have to call now, this is great. Director Giglio, let's mess that up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Always happy to. The annual Fall Crafts Fair boutique is this Saturday, October 5th, at Sea Country Center from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We have over 70 local vendors that'll be selling their unique items. Also, families are invited to the spooktacular Halloween event also at Sea Country on Friday, October 11th, featuring the always-popular Kids Imagination. And festivities begin at 6:30, and admission is $5.00 per person. Kids are encouraged to wear their Halloween costumes. And I'm happy to report that we hosted our first event for teens with special needs, specifically 14 to 21-years-old. It was very successful, we had 35 people in attendance, and we're looking forward to planning the next one. Thank you.
That's awesome. Here we have a whole lot of people signed up for Haunted Trails too, so that's great. Thank you for that. Director Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very happy to announce that the City of Laguna Nigal is soliciting proposals for the design, fabrication, and installation of a permanent exterior public art sculpture of exceptional quality and enduring value to be placed in front of the new Crown Valley Community Park building. The RFP was issued on September 20th. Goals of the project are listed in the RFP along with requirements for submission. The RFP can be downloaded from the city's website. A voluntary site walkthrough is scheduled for October 17th and 18th, and proposals are due on November 4th. The ad hoc committee comprised of members of the council and city staff will review the submitted proposals and make a recommendation for award and council consideration for an award of the contract as scheduled in this December.
Great, thank you very much. Looking forward to seeing what that looks like. City Manager Luterno.
Just one thing, the statement you made about the meeting tomorrow on the federal building, we've also updated that on our website and putting it on our social media to try and clarify what the meeting is about, so.
Yeah, and I got a note from someone, and I want to say thank you for the note, but they were concerned that we hadn't publicized that. We have, we had to figure out what it was, first of all, it's not our meeting, they just happened to use our city hall here, so now that we know, we are publicizing it and noting that it's the first of many, as we're told, for that process, so we thank them for that. I wanted to say thanks to everybody, great meeting tonight, I really appreciate it, appreciate the community coming out. We are officially adjourned at 9:20 p.m. Thank you very much, everyone, have a great evening.